All right, Andrea, let's verify we have quorum.
Director Cook?
Here.
Director Bill?
Here.
Director Commission?
Here.
Director Doherty?
Here.
President Van Vliet?
Here.
Hearing five, Quorum met.
Thank you. Yeah, nice crowd. All right. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting on September 3rd?
Motion second.
All in favor of approving the minutes as written, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Hearing five in favor, motion carries.
All right, with that, it is time for public official comments. We're fortunate to have Mayor Dale Wilti. Welcome.
Okay, nice to meet the board again. So you guys, it's been summer and we're all kind of bouncing around from vacations. I hear you guys had a few. I hope you had fun. My, one of the things I want to talk about today, one of the big things is that our State of Cities happening this Thursday, right here in this room. If anyone still wants to attend, contact the city. I still think there's a couple of tickets left to go. The other thing is that this last, on the last agenda, we had an item addressing, excuse me, golf carts. And we looked at the golf cart ordinance and we basically pulled it. And because it's not to our liking and we didn't even think it was worth the effort of voting, we are still pursuing other avenues to get a safe corridor and legitimize golf court, golf cart crossings. We're working hard on it, but it has to go through a lot of different people and we're even going to our state legislatures to see if we can get something done. We have an engineer, Steve Leibing's working on the safe corridor. So we're going through the steps, but that part of government kind of winds slowly. Tomorrow morning is coffee at the country club. Darcy and I are usually there. To be honest, Jeff Bill's usually there. So come on down, 7:30 at the country club. If you want to sit down, relax, have a cup of coffee and you get a chance to go one-on-one with your questions with me and then Darcy's there, it'll be, you can go one-on-one with Darcy too. And if Jeff Bill's there, you can also bring him in. He says, I'm just an observer. I'm not there. Our next council meeting is October 9th. That's a week and one day from now. So please come on down. And my last comment's personal and this has to do with my daughter-in-law is moving away. And I just want to say thanks for being a great daughter-in-law. And if everybody doesn't know who it is, it's Harmony McNaughton. And would you like to stand? And sure. You know, if I had a good daughter-in-law, she'd obey me at my slightest whim and she'd do whatever I says, but I guess she has a strong will. So I guess the trade-off is worth it. So anyway, we sort of thank for your part in the POA and obviously the family. So that's it for today. There we go.
Any questions or comments for Dale? Thank you, Dale. We appreciate it. All right, we have two presentations tonight. First, the community patrol updates. So Zach and/or Ken, if you want to come forward, please.
Good afternoon. So for the month of August, we had seven citations issued by patrol officers for speeding. We had a total of 54 calls come in in regards to parking. 26 of those led to citations. We had 52 times the gates called out for people that did not comply with us to make a U-turn at the gate and exit the property when they did not meet the standard to get into the community. Seven times they were found and they still continued not to comply with the rules and regulations, which led to a citation. We experienced a increase in citations for e-bikes. We went from 20 citations in July to 30 citations issued. We had a total of 18 calls come in for noise complaint, which three of those led to a citation. The information must've got out about us increasing our stop sign enforcement because we went from 59 stops in July down to eight last, or down in August. We had one stop for people riding in the back of the boat when it was traveling down the street in Canyon Lake, which led to the citation. We had a total of 380 calls for service. 28 of those led to being unable to locate. 70 citations were issued to guests. One citation was issued to a service provider. 124 citations were issued to members. 127 citations were warning citations. We had a total of 34 photos taken on the speed trailers that were led to citations. Two reports of vandalism. 14 times we had reports of property damage in the community and we had 72 other miscellaneous violations. In August, we went ahead and noticed that schools started back up. So we started doing school bus enforcement. We were able to go ahead and issue two citations in the month of August for that violation and we are looking at a lot more for September. In regards to confiscated passes, we had a total of 154 confiscated at the gate in the month of August and we spent 90 minutes at main gate to assist with the two lane protocol to assist with the people getting into the community.
Thank you, Zach. Hey, one question. The property damage you talked about, are those mainly gate arm strikes?
Correct. That's mainly gate arm strikes and just primary damage that's done to POA property, but for the majority of it will be a gate arm strike.
There were 14 in the last month?
14, yes.
Wow, okay. Any other questions for Zach?
Zach, I have a question about confiscated pass, passes. Those are guest pass or POA members passes?
So it's
It's guests, but I'm just kind of, just my clarification.
It's more for anybody that has the pass that gets printed out for when you're coming in. If it doesn't match with, you don't have a license, if it wasn't you, any of the standards of why you would not, you would be denied at the gate, we confiscate that pass at that time. POA card are not tracked on this report at this time.
Thank you.
Zach, regarding member citations plus warning citations, in June 800, in July 203 and August 257, that tells me there's a shift going on somewhere. Can you elaborate on this shift?
Yes, the team has definitely started focusing a lot more on public safety. We wanted to make sure that we're focusing on the community safety all the way around and focusing on the needs that are going on there to make sure everybody's able to make it home safe.
Question, Zach, on the school bus enforcement, the citations. That's a citation for cars not stopping when the bus puts a stop sign out. Is that correct?
That is correct. So when the stop sign has the stop sign out and it is flashing, you will have to stop regardless of what side of the street you are on. And if you fail to stop for that stop sign, you will be issued a citation.
Do you happen to know what that citation cost is?
I do not know. Find them out for community patrol.
I'm sure it's pretty stiff. So people should be aware. Thank you.
I have a question for Ken. Ken, how many e-bike registrations do we have to date?
As of today, we have 700 e-bike registrations. That's not all of them, but that's a lot of them.
And how are we doing on our camera program?
We are almost to triple digits. We're at 99. Would anybody like to be 100? Sign up for the camera program so we can knock on your door if we would like some information that might be on your door cam. I ate the cookie.
The 100th person can have two signs for their house.
Ken, go ahead.
So this is the end of my fourth month here at Camp Canyon Lake. I've started a few jobs from the beginning in my career and I have not started a new job like I have here before. And I will credit that to Harmony and her very nurturing way of leadership. And I have said it out loud that, yeah, she's a kid. She's young in her career and she's doing so well now. I can't imagine what she's going to be 10 or 20 years from now and her ability to lead and to get along with everybody. And I have never started a new job and felt this comfortable ever. So thank you, boss. We will miss you.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Zach. Appreciate your input. All right, and next Director Bill is going to present our member of the month.
Our member of the month for October is Alyssa DeCasperus. The board nominated Alyssa to recognize her for her contributions to Canyon Lake a couple of months ago. Unfortunately, she passed away September 20th and her family is here to accept the award on her behalf. Alyssa moved to Canyon Lake in 2017 from New York. Her son Joseph had already bought a home here and convinced her she moved here, she would not have to deal with snow ever again. Apparently it was all those needed to get her here. So shortly after relocating here, she met her soon-to-be husband, Chris Hickock. They also purchased a house making Canyon Lake their home. Unfortunately, Alyssa had already developed some heart issues before moving here, but she didn't let that slow her down. Some of her contributions include one of the founding people for the 9/11 services that we have here every year. She helped to launch that at the lodge. She was instrumental in launching the event to honor those we lost that day on 9/11. And she had also lost people in those towers. So it was very personal to her. So due to COVID in 2020, New York was not going to have an event to honor the fallen. So that motivated her to have an event. She was not going to let them get away with not having some sort of event for that. She worked with other individuals here in Canyon Lake to get this event started. And she also, and she probably doesn't want me telling this, but you know, she also donated over $12,000 to Tunnel to Towers to help the victims of 9/11. She also volunteered on the appeals committee and that's a job most people don't want. It's a pretty rough job, probably one of the most disliked roles here in Canyon Lake, but she believed in giving back and doing the right thing and supporting the community. When the POA initiated our aforementioned camera program, and there is still, you know, extra signs and cookies if you're number 100. Alyssa and her husband were the ones to step up and recommended we put the signs in the yards for everyone that was participating. They even went above and beyond. They were willing to donate the money to assist in getting this program off the ground. They were going to put the money up to help pay for the signs. When the e-bike program was about to be rolled out, the kids' safety was a big concern for Alyssa. And the program was something that she had reviewed with me as we were setting it up. And she suggested the rewards program for the kids that obeyed the traffic laws and rules. Once again, she stepped up to donate financially to that cause. Canyon Lake resident, she was a Canyon Lake resident nominated as one of six women of impact by the American Heart Association in '22, where she raised over $25,000 for the American Heart Association. She did it without getting any corporate sponsors. She was also a member of the Canyon Lake Car Club and I have a story here that I'd like to share that she had. When she was graduating high school and she needed a car, a friend of her mother's found a 72 Dodge Charger at an impound lot and bought it for her for $250. They drove it home on milk crates because it had no seats. A family friend did the restoration for her and she drove it throughout her college years. Everyone was driving these new little cars and she would drive her Charger with her CB antenna around Brooklyn and Staten Island with pride. People would call her and say, hey, I saw you on the Belt Parkway today. The car eventually died in 2000, so she bought another Charger, as most, you know, car enthusiasts would do, a 71 for $100 out of someone's driveway. So she took the 72 as a donor car, had it used for parts to restore the 71. She even had the key lock on the column changed so that she could keep her original key. So up until recently, she even used that for a set of keys on the same keychain that she ever owned. She was known as Charger Mama or the Car Lady or Car Chick. This was actually found on hercars.com where all the women car enthusiasts go because they get tired of guys telling them it's their boyfriend's car. Currently she has a 56 Cadillac, a 71 Charger, 2003 T-Bird. And although she was never afraid to step up, move a cause forward or donate financially when she saw a need to contribute to the community she lived in, she never wanted any recognition. She never wanted to be known. She would donate her time and her money and it always came with the condition of please keep it anonymous. Nobody needs to know. That's the true act of giving. She wasn't looking for attention. She didn't need to be in front of people. She didn't have to get out and talk. She didn't need to be on Facebook. She gave from the heart. Sorry, I need new glasses. So for this and other things, too numerous to mention within the time we have here, I'd like to ask her husband, Chris, and her son, Joseph, to come on up here and accept this award on her behalf.
Thank you for that, Jeff. Again, thank you, Joseph and Chris for coming forward. I just like to add a few words myself. If any of you didn't know, Alyssa, she was a, we called her a force of nature, you know? She, she, she was passionate about what she did. She was passionate about the project she was involved with and she was passionate about community. She, she's really one of the people that helped, helped forge this, this community and give, make it what it is today. So we're very, I know it's a deep loss for the family, but, but also a deep loss for the community. We do, it's proper that we, we honor Alyssa today. So thanks. Okay, we have no announcements. So we'll move on to next to member comments and these will be
Timeout. I have a presentation.
Oh, dude, that's right. Thank you.
I want to say, I also like to say, Jeff, that, thank you for that lovely tribute to Alyssa and she was, Alyssa was one of my favorite people in Canyon Lake and I vividly remember the first board meeting she came to and she immediately, I'm like, oh, there's a new face. And she immediately came up and shook my hand and introduced herself and I immediately liked her and she was, all of her opinions were spot on in the community. Anybody that ran into her on Facebook will know that she wasn't shy and that she would tell everybody how she felt and I agreed with her 1,000% on every opinion she expressed. So I'm going to miss her too. And we have another presentation, also sad. As was previously mentioned, our, our long-term clerk of the board, Harmony, I'm not doing this standing up because when we do presentations, people at home can't hear us because it doesn't make it out to Zoom or Facebook. I want to make sure this makes it out to Facebook and people at home. Harmony came to work at the POA 17 years ago at the pool and worked her way up to be an extremely integral part of our corporate environment upstairs on the third floor in the POA corporate office. And since I've been general manager, you've been clerk of the board, I think the last, just about within a couple of months for the last seven years. And so Harmony has taught me and every board that we've worked with together, all the history, everything that we thought we knew, but we had no idea what's happened here in the POA. And I say often that nothing here is ever new. That's been, that's been discussed. It's been tried. It's been voted on. It's been shot down. It's been passed and then unpassed. And so the insight that I've learned from Harmony and just the history in her head of things that have happened here over the last 17 years has been invaluable to me and to all the incoming boards. And Harmony's been a huge part of the orientation of every new board coming in. And I could go on for hours. I won't, but I just can't even begin to tell you how important you have been to this organization and the corporate staff. You've done a fantastic job training Ken, which he attested to, and Andrea to replace you as clerk of the board. And you're just a fantastic coworker and supported me and the boards. And I can't even tell you how much we're going to miss you. You're a friend. We're not saying goodbye. We're saying good luck to you and Adam and have a fantastic adventure in upstate New York and come visit us. Okay, and now we have a presentation and a photo op. Thank you, Harmony. I gotta do that over. I didn't make her cry. I feel like the board might do that later.
Oh, okay, good.
Somebody's muted. Perfect. Thank you. Rather than do it later, because not everyone may stay till later. Oftentimes, we're going to address it now. So would anyone like to maybe say any final words to Harmony? I'll add one. Go ahead, Alex.
I will say, I will say something. Harmony is the rock of the POA. She, she keeps us all aligned, pointed in the same direction. She doesn't let us go off on tangents. She's our non, she's our legal voice, but she's not legal. I will say, as I've been on the board two years now, I knew Harmony before that quite a bit, but when I got on the board, what she means to us as a board and a board member is invaluable. I'm not sure we'll ever replace her. I really appreciate everything you've done just to keep us focused and on the right track and good luck to you.
I guess I have a couple of comments. One, from a professional standpoint, I agree with everything that Eric and Alex both said. The reason our boards have worked well is because we've had good guidance. Boards have turned over every year. And, and there's, so it has to be this constant thing that, that keeps it, keeps it together. And Harmony has been a lot of that glue. If you're a board president and you're not familiar with things like parliamentary procedure and so forth, Harmony is the one that we turn to, to, to get things taken care of. And so I know Harmony, you have a great future and career ahead of you professionally. Your management skills are exemplary, the way you deal with people. Your kindness, your willingness to take input and so forth are excellent. On a personal note, I know my wife and I went through just what you are doing right now and it's hard. It's hard to uproot your family and move to the other side of the country. And, and that's a tough thing to do, but it's an act of love that you're giving to your family. And, and I know they recognize it and your family will be stronger as a result. And so I want you, I want you to know that we recognize that you're doing this for, for them, but we also recognize the love that you had for our community and we can't wait to see you back. Everyone else is going to wait till later.
May I, Bill? Do you mind?
Please?
Please. So I just want to say to Harmony, I'm going to miss you so much. You've taught me a lot. I have some big shoes to fill. I'm super grateful for you. And I just want to tell you thank you for everything you've done and we're so going to be at a loss for you in our office every day. So I know you keep telling me that, but I keep remembering my shoes are bigger. So I gotta keep trying to fill them for you. So thank you so much for everything.
Okay, with that, it is time for member comments on non-personal personnel issues. So if it is an item that's on the agenda that you would like to speak on, we'll address it when the item comes up. If you have, you'd like to address something that is not on the agenda now is your opportunity. And so Andrea, do we have any speakers?
I do. I have, my first speaker will be Art Bedmister.
Hello, Art. You have three minutes.
So I want a second or third or fourth or fifth, whatever it is, or anything about Harmony. She's always the person you could go to if you felt, didn't understand something, she'd calm it down. You'd leave there feeling good about it and everything and just like the mom. I call the community, the community mother basically on that. So we're going to miss you. I'm very, very happy that your family will be together. I can't wait to see the video of Adam shoveling snow the first time though. That'll be good. So. So tonight, I just want to share with you, just something that kind of been here 10 years, next month on that, the importance of accurate information. When you're being asked aboard to make a decision on something and vote on something that's important, well, everything's important, you need to make sure you can trust the information you're getting. Cause if not, then you may be making a wrong decision based on it. So if you're going to be making a decision on something involving circular driveways, let's just say, how many circular driveways were there? Well, what I would do to present that information to you is what I did today and yesterday. I went on Google Earth maps. I took five streets. I took Continental Canyon Lake Drive, South, North, Longhorn and Vacation. And I counted the number of homes. I sat there on Google Earth maps and counted. There's 755 homes of everybody's interest and I had to break down. And then I drove yesterday to all those with my clipboard. You can see here from all that's chicken scratching on here, inside here. And I wrote down the number of circular driveways are. There are 36 total circular driveways. So out of 755 homes of that sampling, that's 0.05%, half of 1% of the homes have circular driveways. And that's 755 homes, by the way, was a sampling of 17% of the total population of the, of homes inside the community. So, and I looked at those was most important though, if I was to say something like, and all those circular driveways have got motor homes blocking the homes. It looks horrible. If that was something I was going to say, I'd want to check that. And when I checked it, not a single home of those 36 driveways has a motor home blocking the view of the home. I have this. I will take all of you out tonight if you'd like to make a drive because I put the crossroads on here also inside there of where they're at. So I can go right back to them and see. Now, let's make it clear, that could change. Maybe everybody brings a motor homes a home this weekend and blocks them. And this doesn't count the side streets. So we'll be clear on that. I stipulate all that. But I just want to make sure inside there, that's what we're looking at. So it's important rather than just saying a lot of homes, because in your mind you're going, oh my God, this is a big problem. We got to fix this. But if none of the homes in a 17% sampling have it and someone actually did the work and looked at them, I would just go back to the people telling you they did what they're saying. How did you have it? Show me the homes and everything else. And I know I get 15 seconds left, so I'm winding down on that. Harmony, thank you again. We'll be calling you, I'm sure for counseling and sure, as I request, everybody will be calling you. You know that. So all righty. Safe travels.
Thanks, Art. Appreciate your input. I will make two comments. One, Art, you have a future as a future POA board member with all the homework you do. And so you might want to think about that as you go forward. Number two is nice way to try and sneak your way in on a non-agenda topic about a topic on the agenda.
Okay, we have a Ken Reynolds. There's a couple of items on here. We, did you want to come up and speak now or during? Okay. Okay.
Got it. Good evening. So I have one of the circular driveways in Canyon Lake. I've had the home for four years. Keep it pretty clean. That's one of the problems I have with the community is the parking of all the vehicles and stuff. I mean, some people have like four boats in their driveway and straight driveways, not circular driveways. So I think that should be part of the problem. If we're going to look at driveways, it should be how many boats you have, how many RVs you have. Those kind of issues. The other main thing that I'm here for is, and I brought my granddaughter. She lives with my son. He has his own house here in Canyon Lake. I have a corner house, direct view out of my home office is a bus stop. I see kids get almost hit crossing the streets on a regular basis. She crosses up further up Vacation. I'm further down, so I get to watch the kids across the street. It's horrifying. And I think the patrol's been doing a good job. I kind of see them on a regular basis following the buses. But I think the problem is, is before the bus gets there, the kids are standing or they're crossing these streets. You know, we put a crosswalk in for, for the bicycle park thing, but there's nothing for the kids. And it's just, it's crazy. And somebody's going to get, somebody's going to get killed. I mean, it's just insane. I've lived in a lot of communities where they have speed bumps. And I know that's probably a sore subject. The old neighborhood I lived in in Orange County, they put them in and I was not a fan of them. But maybe I'm getting older and a little wiser. You know, I think it's something to be addressed, the safety of the kids as far as the bus stop. I have a few other things, but I don't want to take up too much time, but. All right.
Thank you for your time. And that's certainly, I appreciate your input. We, we do respect and welcome your input. And we'll address that with our, with our.
One, one other thing, if I have another second here.
Sure.
Just a suggestion, and I don't know if it's part of what we're already doing in this community is, I think part of the, you know, I, I realize the concern with all the cars and the stuff. And I think that's why the circular driveway thing got brought up. Because I, I see some of that. I mean, I'm not blind. But maybe we look at registrations. Because I know in the old neighborhood that I lived in, in Orange County, if you had a vehicle in your front yard and if it wasn't registered to the property and insured, it wasn't on the property. So maybe that's some of the, the stuff that we see sitting around. Maybe that can be addressed that way. So the people that have circular driveways aren't targeted, you know?
Fair enough. Thank you for your input.
Mr. Reynolds? Yes, sir. Quick question.
Sure.
You mentioned your, your street for the bus pickup. And I know we're, security is going to monitor all the bus stops. In particular, which street was yours on?
I live on the corner of Vacation and San Joaquin Drive East.
East, okay, thank you.
I got the White House. I just put the new brown roof on. Pretty hard to miss.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do we have any others?
No further comments. There's one, but it's during.
We will address, I know there may be more people that want to speak, particularly on the, the item. What is it? 8.8. We will be addressing that in more detail later. Sure. Got time for one more? There's a button in front. If you press the button, the people online can hear you too.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Jeremy. Check, check. So yeah, I just wanted to bring up that I would love to have us entertain a better stop crosswalk. It's Canyon Lake Drive South. Somebody's going to get hit. This, every single day, somebody runs, somebody doesn't look. And it's not just the people that live in here. It's also the patrol. The patrol is running, almost hit me, kind of like Home Alone. I don't want to see somebody get hurt. So I don't know how to continue a conversation on this, but it needs to happen.
Tell us where Canyon Lake Drive South is fairly long.
Yes, yeah, my whole number two. The first, the first crosswalk, you come in through the, through the gates.
Okay. Okay. The way to have a conversation is we have a, we have a security committee that addresses some of those security, security and safety issues. They meet on the second Monday of the month. You're welcome to attend those or, or speak, just speak with any board member. We'd be happy to talk to you more if you have more concerns.
Yeah.
But thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's, that's all the member comments. So we will begin with the consent agenda. I'm going to propose that we just pull item D, since it's a reserve funds transfer financial matter to make that a board action item. Other than that, keeping items A, B, C, and E. Are there, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? No.
Hearing five in favor, A, B, C, and E approved.
Perfect. All right, with that, Susan, would you mind coming forward to tell us about the reserve funds transfer? For transparency purposes?
Good evening. Civil Code Section 5502 requires that any electronic transfers greater than $10,000 or 5% of the total reserve accounts be formally approved by the board. We recently paid property taxes with an electronic funds transfer. And it's $19,478.10 and $331, two separate transfers.
How about item D then?
I'm sorry?
The reserve fund, 800,000 reserve.
The title on this board action item should just say funds transfer. This is an operating fund. In compliance with Civil Code 5502 and prudent fiscal management, it's recommended that the tax payments be approved for release to the tax authorities. In addition, it's recommended that electronic approval be permitted for this specific type of expenditure on an annual basis going forward.
Yeah, and we included item C in the consent agenda. Item D is the one, if you could explain that one a little bit more, that would be the next one between accounts.
My apologies.
No worries.
Well, we're completely transparent tonight then. All right. Reserve fund transfers, cash is moved between the operating fund where the accounts payable checks are written and the other reserve funds when necessary. In order to balance the funds, I'm requesting that we move $600,000 from the road reserve fund into the operating fund. And that we also move $200,000 out of the CIP reserve fund into the operating fund. In compliance with Civil Code 5515 and prudent fiscal management, it's recommended that the two separate transfers, which total $800,000 between the Schwab Road Reserve and the Schwab CIP Reserve Fund be made to the operating fund.
Thank you, Susan. Do we have a motion to approve the fund transfer?
Motion.
Second.
All right, all in favor of approving it, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, Susan. Appreciate it.
Hearing five in favor, D passes. Thank you.
All right. All right, now onto the regular business. Cheryl Mitchell, item 8.1.
Sorry about that. You said P, 8.1, thinking PC 8.1. Good evening. Yes, we are here. We're seeking approval for the rule revision that was approved for a 28-day reading last month. We're now seeking approval for the board to actually approve the revision for property maintenance of PC 4.19. The revised rule is to reflect a better understanding of what is considered storage, such as storing of excessive or multiple amounts of items not used on a regular basis. So that would not include things that are in your backyard that you use, you know, such as canopies, chairs, relaxing items, pools, stuff like that. It would be just multiple items that are just basically stored on the property. This is to also include unsightly properties with bags of trash, garbage, and business or construction materials or supplies and/or also recycling material, vehicle parts, to name a few. PC 4.9 also includes long-term storage of any items not used regularly is not allowed. So it is recommended that the Board of Directors approve a rule revision for PC 4.19 for property maintenance.
Thanks for the description on that, Cheryl. I, um, the reason there's a little confusion is because I said agenda item 8.1, which is, was the 28-day reading for rule PC 510. And I believe what we're doing is we are pulling that one from the agenda.
Correct.
As written.
And if I may, the reason why we are pulling is it is an incorrect version that was submitted to the board. So what was submitted and reviewed by the public is not the correct version of what the committee wanted to move forward.
So for those who beforehand wanted, wanted to talk to us about the driveways and so forth, we're actually pulling that item for the agenda. It will not be voted upon in its current form. Okay.
Mr. President, can please get a motion to pull the item?
I'll make the motion. We pull that item. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of pulling item, agenda item 8.1, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Hearing five in favor, motion carries. Item pulled.
Thank you. We're not, that, that proposal has been removed and pulled. We're not, we're not going to approve it as, as is. We're pulling it off the agenda. So. There's a question? Yeah, go ahead. Someone's come forward. It was this evening. Yeah. It was during, 10 minutes before the meeting. All right, well, Cheryl gave us a item, item 8.2, so PC 4.119.
Do you want me to repeat it again?
No, you don't need to repeat. I think we heard it the first time. We just had a little bit of confusion because we skipped over an item, but that's okay.
I make a motion to approve 8.2 on the board action item.
Second.
All right, it has been item, agenda item 8.2, which is rule revision 2 PC 4.19. Are there any comments or questions from the members? Any board comments or questions? All in favor of approving rule, rule revision for PC 4.19, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing five in favor, motion carries.
All right, item 8, 8.3, is Carrie here or someone presenting? Ah, come on forward, Jose. Girl Scout Troop 939.
Good evening. The Canyon Lake POA has received a request from Girl Scouts Troop 939 seeking approval as a Canyon Lake POA sanctioned club. The club has submitted all necessary documents required per our sanctioned club policy. And they do meet the minimum of 20 members with 75% requi, 75% resident requirement. It is recommended that our, that the board approve Girl Scouts Troop 939 as a sanctioned club effective October 1st, 2024.
Thank you. Anyone like to make a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Perfect. Any member comments on this? Or questions?
Jose, I got a question. Is this the only Girl Scout troop that we have sanctioned as a club?
Yes.
Was there previously another Girl Scouts in the past? Does that change numbers? I don't really understand if there was a previous, we have to do a new chapter. I'm not sure.
There was no club of this in the past, or in the recent past at least.
Thank you.
No problem.
Since we approved them, do we get discounts on the cookies?
Good question.
I'll just make, I, I think scouting is great. I think it's a, it's a great developmental and informative, I think, for the youth in the community. And I know I wholeheartedly support it. All in favor of approving Girl Scout Troop 939, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Hearing five in favor, motion carries.
Perfect, thank you. All right. Tiffany?
Good evening. I'm going to be with you guys for a minute and everybody laugh to hear all my rules. So the, this rule was presented last month as a 28-day reading. The Rules and Regulations Review Committee received a recommendation from the Security Advisory Committee to review General 2.0 guest usage of common areas and amenities. The committee recommended expanding the scope of the rule from the existing 10 specific rules to encompass the entire General Rule 2.0 section, which goes from General Rules 2.0 to 2.23. This change would provide the Canyon Lake POA with a broader authority to hold members accountable for the actions of their guests. It's recommended that the board approve the revised General Rule 2.0 guest usage of common areas, amenities as attached.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any member comments, questions? Like to speak on this? If you do, just raise your hand. Do not forever hold your peace. Okay, board comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hearing five in favor, motion carries.
The Rules and Regulations Review Committee was tasked with reviewing the current rules and regulations document. The next four rules are going to be on this note with a focus of streamlining it. This rule revision was presented last month as a 28-day reading. It combines the no smoking rules from six different sections into one singular rule in the general rule section. It's recommended that the board approves the revised General Rule 2.13, no smoking as attached.
Motion.
Second.
All right, any member comments? Member comments? Going once, going twice? Board comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Hearing five in favor, motion carries.
Okay, on the same note as the last rule, the, this rule revision was also presented last month as a 28-day reading. It combines General Rule 4.4H, fishing is prohibited on Main, North, Treasure Island causeways and common docks with Lodge, Lighthouse, Restaurant Rule 2.8, no fishing allowed on Lodge premises except common dock. It's recommended that the board approves the revised General Rule 4.8, fishing is prohibited on Main, North, Treasure Island causeways and common docks as attached.
There a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any member comments on fishing changes? Board comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, keep on going, okay. I feel like I'm keeping everybody awake with my rules tonight. So the next one is restaurant rules. These revisions were presented also last month. They combine the Lodge, Lighthouse, Restaurant rules with the country club rules. This change is aimed at simplifying the rules and ensuring consistency across similar facilities. In the process of combining these rules, In the process of combining these rules, we propose removing lodge lighthouse restaurant two point one, country club two point one, no smoking, lodge lighthouse restaurant two point five, no loitering, lodge lighthouse restaurant two point eight, no fishing allowed, lodge lighthouse restaurant five point six and country club five point six, responsibility for damages. We recommend them being removed because they're covered in the general rules section. It is recommended that the board approve combining lodge lighthouse restaurant rules with the country club rules while removing the redundant rules for no smoking, no loitering, no fishing allowed and responsibility for damages as attached.
There a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Member comments?
I'll, I'll make a quick comment just because this, I think, the end of the rules. We didn't really change any of the rules to this process. This is a process of just changing where the rules are in the big picture and reducing redundancy. So we had rules for no smoking in basically every single park and everything. So um now it's a general rule across the board. So it's easier for staff, it's easier for patrol, it's easier for everybody reads the rules. So it's really the premise here. So it's not like we're just making up rules. We're just kind of reorganizing where they are.
Thank you, Alex. All in favor of approving this, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed?
Hearing five in favor, motion carries.
Okay, this is my last one. No damage to CLPOA property. Again, it's GR two point one zero, presented last month as a twenty eight day reading. The revision was proposed to hold both members and banquet customers accountable for any damages to CLPOA property. This change will enable the removal of duplicate rules pertaining to damages currently found in the restaurant rules section. It's recommended that the board approve the revised general rules two point one zero, no damage to CLPOA property as attached.
One more time, motion?
Motion.
I'll second it. Any member comments? Board comments? I have one question.
Yes.
How many pages is our rulebook?
How many pages are in our rulebook? Gosh, like hundred and eighty out?
Okay, how many, by by the adoption of these five measures that we just did, how many, or six, five or six, five?
Probably ten to fifteen pages.
We took fifteen pages out, so good.
Tiffany, uh they've got the term prime member or client. I haven't seen that term. Maybe I've missed it, but.
We added that in there specifically for the country club. So the country club has events for the public and so we wanted to include the customer. And then it also kind of pertains to clubs as well, using the facilities.
Thank you.
All in favor of approving this last item, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed?
Hearing five in favor, motion carries.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. All right, next is Ken. Security Advisory Committee Charter.
Good evening again. The uh Security Advisory Committee has submitted a uh request for charter change. There's a red line for one bullet point that uh originally said that they would conduct a quarterly perimeter security audit and provide results with photos for issue resolution. After a lot of uh conversation and uh evaluating from within the committee, they decided that that's probably not something they should be going forward with and will focus their efforts in other areas.
There a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Perfect. Member comments? Board comments?
Ken, just a quick question. Says it's not an appropriate function of the committee members. Can you explain to the people why involving the safety of walking back there and the fences and how we're going to approach that in the future? So they don't think we're just eliminating it.
The last time they did this was, I believe, in late July or early August. So if you have a thermometer, that's reason number one. There's also the reptilian environment that's out there. That's reason number two. And so it was in their best interest not to do that quarterly and rely on the community, which is very good at pointing things out anyways. So we felt to go ahead and you try that for a while and see how that works.
Yeah, is there, I know this is an area that we've actually been doing it for a few years and we have identified a number of areas that hadn't been identified normally by operations in some more remote areas. How do we, how will we continue that? Is there, can we use drone technology or anything else to 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 explore it regularly? Or how do we keep an eye on our perimeter?
The com- the committee is gonna continue to discuss the matter and we're gonna look into different ways of doing it. And in my position, I can also take that role on in doing it from certain perspectives. It just did not need to be part of the charter and a quarterly function as written.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
Hearing five in favor, motion carries.
Thank you, Ken. All right, annual committee member appointments. Andrea.
Good evening. Um regarding the annual committee member appointment, it is a um it's annually that we go to the board to have approval for all the committee members to be reappointed to our committees. And we were just asking if the board could please approve the appointment of the following committee members and the chairpersons to align with our POA community policy. And you have the list of all of the um committee members at this time.
I would like to make an amendment to this, if I could. On ones that, this is only because I attended the senior working group today and then we got a late resignation from one member who's moving out of the community to move into a, moving away and that's, that's Ron Kelly. Um so we gotta, he unfortunately is resigning because he he's moving out of the community. So as
Mr. President, we got that resignation today and we will send a letter and then we will advertise for that.
Right, but I just want to make, if we're approving the committees, I figure we just kind of
Sure.
do it real time. Yeah. So as amended, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Any member comments or questions? Get from the board. I would like to notice that we've had, um there are three changes from before. Ron is is a very recent one that we added. Alyssa DeCaspus also was a a a key member of the Appeals Committee will be dearly missed. And she's no longer on that. Um one other member of the Architectural Control Committee, uh who is a member who's who's uh who's done a great service for us for many, many years. How many years has Gil been a member? Twenty? I don't know, uh eighteen or so. Gil's been a a great member, uh and we are, as a community, very thankful for his tremendous accomplishments. Unfortunately, he has to step back uh due to health issues and he's he's uh he's focused his time on 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 healing. And so, and so Gil is not a member of of the uh of the ACC due to personal uh issues. And so I just wanted to note those three changes for everyone as to why there've been some adjustments. Other than that, it's
We had one more change also. We had Larry Mensch become the chairperson on the TWG.
Great, perfect. Any other comments or questions by the board?
Yeah, I'd like to point out there's seven empty positions on these committees. So if anybody wants to raise their hand and and there's a lot of committees open here that, you know, from rec committee to appeals, this is a great opportunity to get involved and see some of the inner workings of this community. So seven open positions, guys.
All in favor of approving the annual committee member appointments as modified, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed?
Hearing five in favor, motion carries as amended.
Thank you. All right, and in her last POA board action, we're gonna have Harmony talk to us about bylaw revision.
Yes, thank you. Um it was recently, well, not brought to our attention, but there was a recent request from a member to revisit our bylaws, which has, as you know, very outdated language. They're fifty six years old. And are, there's certain provisions that um have what could be viewed as discriminatory language that we simply don't use because of that reason. The sentence in particular that we're asking the board to strike from the bylaws is "A lot held by a husband and wife in any form of joint ownership, including community property, shall qualify the owners for one membership only to be issued in the name of the husband unless otherwise directed." So for the last fifteen years, at least, we have not practiced this provision. We apply the first name on the deed to be the prime member unless otherwise changed amongst co-owners. But um because the board has the authority, according to civil code and government code, we're asking that you vote to change it to strike it from the bylaws.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Perfect. Any member comments or questions about it? Board comments? I guess time we come into this millennium and recognize that uh we are equal. Um and uh so all in favor of approving this revision to the bylaws, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Mr. President? Sorry, I believe there's a formal board resolution that is included.
There is, thank you. Thank you. So we will need to sign this resolution. And approve it. We need to sign it too. So um so in accordance with this revision, thank you, we, thank you, Teresa, for that. We need to uh resolve that we are going to strike, change the language to to remove that sentence, uh deferring only to the husband and uh and taking that out of the bylaws. So I'm gonna move that we uh we approve this resolution of the Board of Directors uh as as written. Is there a second? Perfect. All in favor, say aye.
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 Uh is there any opposed?
Hearing five in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Teresa. All right, board liaison committee reports. So we'll start with Jeff on the on the right.
Uh let's see, community reports. There's not a lot going on with the committees to report that's definitive. We're working on a few things with the FPC. Um hopefully I have some more information next month. I was unable to make the finance committee meeting, but Alex filled in for me. So when it's his turn to speak, he can update us on that. I would like to add, you know, I do see some blowback on the e-bike enforcement. And I hope people understand the e-bike enforcement is about safety. It's about educating these kids to not run out in traffic on their bikes. It's, there's a reason for rewards program and unfortunately a punishment program. It's all about safety. It's um, and I'll quote Alyssa on this. Some of these kids, they they get out there and their parents say, oh, not my kid. But at the end of the day, it will be your kid if you don't teach them safety. So I just wanted to add that in there. And one last thing. Um I don't know, Alex, you hit on this, the Tuesday work group? Sign up, you might learn something, make some new friends. It's a great way to contribute to the community. Thanks.
Go.
Thanks for that plug for Tuesday Work Group. They're a great bunch of guys and uh
And and gals.
Oh, oh yeah, I'm I'm sorry. I'm I'm still in the old school, so you gotta correct me. But no, the ladies do a lot of work and uh it's a great addition to the group. But uh currently they're reorganizing for their new year. They've been off all summer. Larry Mensch is the new chairman of the uh TWG. And uh he's put a list of about twenty projects that he's already starting to work on. So uh they're gonna hit the ground running. Uh the golf course is closing on October fourteenth for overseeding. It's an annual thing that we do. Close the golf course, uh so maintenance can go in and put all the necessary chemicals down, cut the grass short, put the seed down and then water it real heavily. Uh it'll open on November fourth. Typically, the first couple of weeks the course is open is cart path only. But um after that, then cart paths are allowed on the course with a ninety degree rule. When the course opens, there's a new hole layout. Now, the typical hole layout that you're familiar with for the last twenty some years or more uh is gonna change. The idea is to streamline the flow of traffic around the clubhouse. And uh it was presented by the golf professional as a, as an idea and the Green Committee really thought it was a good idea and and wanted to give it a try. One of the things that we have to do, obviously, is the signs on each hole are gonna be different because hole number one is now gonna be hole number ten. So the signs have to change. And uh those have been ordered. Those are cast bronze signs. Uh it was a joint effort by the POA and the CLAPS to share the cost of that eighteen thousand dollars for those those signs. And uh then, of course, we'll get the help of the TWG to put those signs and install them. Excuse me. Green Committee uh finally got approval to renovate hole number two tee-in ground. So they'll start that project when the course closes. It might carry over beyond the opening of the course. Uh so it might be affected uh when the course opens. But um that's going to expand the tee box and the cart path around there because of some congestion and uh issues that we had. So that'll be taken care of uh shortly when the course is closed. And they're also working on a bunker repair project uh to include repair and upgrades of the bunkers, which will enhance our golf course. So it's my committee reports for now. Thank you.
Thanks, Cheryl. I'll I'll cover very quickly the uh the senior working group. Uh they are having their their holiday boutique November ninth and tenth. They're still open for people who, if they uh want to have vendors there, if you want to be a vendor, that's available. Otherwise, uh come on down for the holiday shopping on this, on November ninth and tenth. Uh last Saturday, or last Sunday, they had their their potluck. It was another one hosted by Rhea Riley. She did another pasta night and when Rhea does invite you for pasta, she she came with uh spaghetti. She also came with uh sausage, bricatoni and chicken piccata and they had sixty people had a wonderful feast over there. So again, uh last month's member of the month, uh Rhea Riley, again, uh continues to to give back to our community and 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 they're very thankful for that. Other than that, they're getting ready for their Christmas and New Year's activities. So we are entering holiday season. So with that, over to Jeff.
Recreation Committee has an opening. And as I've said before, and I'll say it again now, it's a really fun committee because we get to think of fun things to do. Uh little projects for the community to make it more fun than it already is. Uh last month, I spoke about three projects that we had, the committee had approved. Uh unfortunately, those didn't get sent up the pipeline in the past thirty days. I'm hopeful that they uh will be up the pipeline in the next, in the next thirty days. And uh I probably shouldn't tell you what they are because they're not approved, but they're very um representative of the types of things the rec committee sits around and and thinks up. So uh our next meeting is next week. We meet bi-monthly. Uh and again, if you wanna have some fun, uh apply for the committee. Thank you.
All right, um last month, I was fortunate to go sit in finance committee um for Jeff Bill. Um every time I go in finance committee, I'm always amazed that I feel like I'm literally the smallest brain in that room. The people in this this committee is super educated, very intelligent. Um and I learn something every time I'm in there, which is, is it's exciting. I I think that the one time I've been on this, been in this POA board position now two years, I think this this meeting. Um and that committee, I learned more in that committee meeting than I have anywhere else. That's probably the least thing I knew about this committee was the finances um when I got to this community. So, or got on the board. So uh Susan, they're gonna be working on the next month. They're gonna start working budgeting for next year. So that starts in a couple of weeks. So uh crazy, huh? Six months of getting that budget. They'll be working through the holidays um to help the board and staff um create the budget for next year. Uh I also sit on the Rules and Regulations Committee. Um we are getting close to the end of uh narrowing down all the rules and so forth. So thank you, Tiffany, for just guiding this and getting it down the right right position. Uh one thing I also, I sit on the Appeals Committee. Uh my warning there on Appeals Committee, uh there's cameras everywhere. So if you think you got away with something, you're gonna appeal your ticket. Uh there's body cam footage, there's car footage. It, I'm sorry, when we see you running a stop sign and you said you didn't and it's right there, black and white, you're probably not gonna win the appeal. So just be aware. Um but it's it's super, uh I love that committee. I'm gonna miss Alyssa. She was a just a rock on that committee. She had a heart um like no other. Um she was an amazing woman. And uh I'm glad that I've gotten to know her over the last two years. Um my life has uh been better for it. So we're gonna miss you, Alyssa.
All right. Up for you Eric, general manager report.
Okay, thank you all for coming. As usual, I like to direct people to our staff reports, which start on page 84, I think of the, oh, no. 54 of the agenda that we distribute to the public. In there, a few highlights, the car show is this Saturday. And so I want to thank our operations and activity staffs for, for working with the car club to put on what's one of my favorite events. Also want to thank the guild for putting on a great Harbor Fest event. And thank our activities and communications and operations staff for help making that event and other club events possible. The clubs do put on a lot of amazing events and behind the scenes, our staff is always there. Helping support and promote the events and operations physically setting up the events and community patrol, making sure everybody's safe. And Ken, Ken was there walking around, making sure everybody behaves. So what happens here is really a team effort and, and the clubs do a lot. But our, our job is to help support and make those things possible also. So thank you Guild. That was a nice event. The junior women's club about ready to put on one of their biggest events of the year, October 12th, Rocktoberfest. That's always a good time. And again, all the same people are involved, activities, operations, security, so communication. So make sure you check that event out. Another last POA concert of the year is Chase Beckham, American Idol winner, November 2nd. Not sure if we're sold out or not yet. I was going to look tonight and I ran out of time, but he's quite an act. And so if we still have tickets, you should check that show out. Several other clubs are having Halloween events at the end of the month. And if you're not subscribed to our Thursday newsletter, I encourage you to subscribe. Every Thursday, we send a newsletter to your email box and promoting those club events and community events and classes and everything else that's going on in the community. And then just a, a brief overview of what operations is up to this month. Later this month, between October 21st and October 25th, we're going to be seal coating all the parking lots that we repaved in 2019. And that's just to keep them in good shape and put a little sunblock on them so they last longer. It's just prudent pavement management. So we're going to be doing all the common area parking lots. And we're also going to be doing the entry and exit lanes at main gate. Those have not been done. They've been seal coated, but they were seal coated around the, the thermoplastic legends, which doesn't look all that good. Those is the, the white signage saying what, what the lanes are for. That was thermoplastic striping and that has to be ground off to be properly seal coded. So it doesn't look that great right now and, and we're going to do some grind and overlay there and properly maintain those lanes. We will be maintaining at least one entry lane and one exit lane. While that happens, we've already started notifying the community and that's also going to be happening during that seal coating time. October 21st to October 25th. And as Joe mentioned, country club and golf course will be closed October 14th for annual overseeding. And that's all the highlights I have. And I just want to say again, thank you so much Harmony for everything. And we're really going to miss you, but I know we're going to see you around and we'll, we'll come visit you in New York and we know you're going to come visit us. So, so we're not saying goodbye, but, but good luck. So thank you.
Thank you Eric. With that, we're down to board comments. So we'll go the opposite direction. Alex, why don't you go first?
I don't know if I have any more to say today, but you guys, I'm, I know most people have left and I will tell you, it does make this job more rewarding when the, there's people sitting in the stands, whether they're going to argue with us or debate with us or whatever it might be. The participation is huge. That's what this country is built on. So I really appreciate it. I wanted to touch base on a simple matter of what we can do and what we can't do as a board. Once something's an agenda item, once it's an agenda item, we can't remove it from the agenda until we come into an official median, meeting, meeting. And the five of us don't get together only once a month. And so the agenda comes out, we get the agenda the same time the community does. And so we can't pull these agenda items until we are sitting in this meeting legally. So we're not pulling any fast ones and trying to drag people in here for any reason. But just so you guys know, there is a process we have to adhere to. But again, I'm super, I saw some friends I haven't seen for a while. Glad they're coming here to speak up. But I'm going to say one more thing about Harmony. I'm going to miss you. So thank you.
I'm, I'm going to say two things about two ladies. I got to know Alyssa about a year and a half, two years ago, and I quickly found her to be sweet, smart. And she had the common sense of about 100 people, maybe more. And you don't run into those people very often. So having a conversation with her for me was always delightful because she just oozed a common sense when she had an opinion about anything. It just, it, it made a lot of sense. I'm going to, to miss her. Harmony, all of the accolades you have received tonight are certainly well deserved. And a lot of people tonight have wished you good luck, but I'm not going to do that. Now you're probably saying, well, why, why isn't Greg going to wish me good luck? And the reason is, I think I've said this before, I'm a believer that you make your own good luck. And certainly for you and your family and what you're doing and your, the adventure you're going on. You've, you've made a decision to, to take your luck in a different path and it's, it's going to be fantastic. So I'm going to wish you good luck anyway. But I will miss you very much. You, you're a, what they call a walking encyclopedia of this community. That will be sorely missed, but just the very best to you and your family. Thank you for everything.
Okay. The city golf championship is this weekend. It's a two-day tournament, October 5th and 6th. It's morning tee times and it's sponsored by the city of Canyon Lake and our POA. It's a great event. It's the 10th annual city championship. And it's a showcase of our community, our golf course, our association. And it's an opportunity for people from Riverside County, Riverside County, Orange County, to come in and play our golf course and compete for the championship of the city of Canyon Lake. It's a once a year annual event and it's a, it's a generally big hit. So, and as part of that, on Saturday, we put together a city scramble, which is competing teams from different cities around Canyon Lake that come in and have a fun day of golf on Saturday and compete for the city, battle of the cities championship. So that's what will be going on this weekend there, as well as the car show, which Eric mentioned. That's October 5th on Saturday, opens up at nine o'clock. There are 228 classic cars there. I know I, I get there, try to get there every year and I, I just love it. I don't know if I love the cars more than the music or the music more than the cars, but they're always playing good oldie songs as well. Harmony, I got to get on the train. Yeah, it, it's been five years that I've worked closely with you. My terms on the board, my term as president, you're absolutely supportive as I could imagine. I appreciate that. My time this term on the board with IDR, you're, you're a rock. You're, you're there with so much, you know, sound advice and, and, and you understand the goals and direction of the community and, and you focus on that. And it's just been a real blessing working with you all this time and I wish you and your family well. Thank you.
Well, the fun part about going last, there's not much to say. But I would like to go back to talking about Alyssa. If you didn't know her, it was your loss. She was guiding light to me personally after being on the board. She encouraged me to run. And I know that she offered a lot of stability to us and a lot of our decisions. The other thing I'd like to say is, you know, to reiterate, the car show this weekend, you gotta go. It's a lot of fun. It's busy. There's some cool cars there. I mean, unfortunately I won't have my car there this weekend because I won't be there. So I'm sorry you guys are going to miss out on that. But it's, it's going to be a great time. I think you really enjoy it. There's going to be food, music, obnoxious people having a good time. That's what they do at car shows. And lastly, because I want to keep repeating everything they said to keep you guys here late. Harmony, I feel betrayed. Just, you know, I'm the newest guy, just got on here, you know, recently. And, you know, you've helped to cut through some of the drama. I know it's surprising there's drama involved with this. And I just really appreciate it. And I've said this before and people may not like that I say it, but you're always the adult in the room. We'll be deliberating, debating, we'll be going on a half hour about something trivial and Harmony will just ask a simple question and it's like, oh yeah, that's right. All right, we're done. So that's really going to be something I think we're going to miss. We'd have, we might have to move these meetings up later in the night to account for our conversations without you. So I hope you come back. I'm pretty sure you will. You got family here. But I wish you the best and I kind of tend to agree with Greg. You don't need luck when you're good. So just take care and travel safe.
I'll close out with, you know, we talked about, we will miss you a lot. The, the community will miss you a lot, but let me talk about the benefits for you of, of doing this move. It's, it's hard to face something like this, but I know for our family, when I moved my family from here to Washington DC as well. You get to make a big move when the kids are young. So you've gone through kind of this big change and you do it together. And it actually pulls the family closer together, we found. And, and your kids are at a great age to do it. So, and you're going to, going to get to experience upstate New York in the fall, which is, which is magical in and of its own. And I know you'll, you know, it'll be, it'll be life-changing in a, in a positive way for you. And so wish you all the best and can't wait to see you back here again. On a personal note, I just got back about 22 hours ago from, from Spain. So I'm, my eyes a little foggy right now, so I don't really have anything else to say other than is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Buenos noches Canyon Lake.